... take a look at them if there's any additions or corrections.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donald. Favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously agenda this evening. Any additions or corrections? Donald, make your motion. Agenda. Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie. Although in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Unanimously. The first item on our agenda this evening, we have Jeff Furman from the Piers Fire Relief Association. Jeff, come on up.
Bring the chair up. Sorry, bring the chair up. Sorry. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
So if you'd like me to read this, I will, or Jeff always does since you've been on with us. Hey, how's that at Steph?
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, on behalf of the Piers Fire Relief Association, I have requested an annual city contribution to the relief association. Last year, both the city and the townships approved a contribution of $450 per member. In the past, the townships have based their contribution on the current number of active members in the city based on theirs, based theirs on a 26-member roster. I am again requesting that the city consider a contribution of $11,700, which is based on the 26 members at $450 per member. With the continued support of the city and the townships, we have been able to bring our retirement rate back up to what it was, once was, at $1,900 per year of service. Thank you for your consideration and support. Sincerely, Jeff Furman, Treasurer, Piers Fire Relief Association.
Well done. Jeff, how's everything going? What beat up?
As the letter stated, we're back to the $1,900 level raised to that last year. And that's where we're at back in the eight one things went south. Every year, we basically start the year with our total assets and kind of do an estimate before the year with a 105% rate of return on investments. And then contributions that we've gotten from the city and the townships. And then figure out what we need to be at to be 100% funded. And I did that calculation based on, whatever we're at, December 31st. And we'll just do it at it. And if we stay at $1,900 per year, that puts us at about 105% funded. Just kind of, you know, a little higher than we want to stay at, as close as we can to 100%. But as of Friday, you know, they call US Bank to see where we're at, and everybody knows what the market's been doing lately. And so, right now, even with, you know, with the last couple of months, the way that performance was, we're still at 101% funded. So I'm comfortable with that. You know, as far as, you know, the contribution, the city and the townships have been raised over the last several years now to keep that fund growing. We did do a little research, you know, we always do, but looked at what's surrounding communities are at. And we are, you know, there's a list that, most current one I could get was 2013 that the state does when they audit. I think we're kind of in the middle of the pack, you know, but the Gadsays, and departments our size, mostly that can, like, carry the range that we belong to. We're not on the high end by any means of, you know, wherever it's at.
We actually low, as far as community range departments, Jeff?
You know, as far as the range, yeah, we've got a number of ones. You know, but some of those, I mean, you know, they're, they're, right here does, I mean, they are, they're $5,000 a year per member, yeah, for about 30 years' service.
Wasn't ideal, like, way up there too. I shouldn't say way up, but when they look at the 25, 2600.
Yeah, you know, I could have brought in the numbers, I don't have them, but each department, they were, but, yeah, a lot of them were around $2,500 range. So I think it's, you know, we have our annual meeting on Thursday, and some of my recommendations, I would say, at 1,900. Try to raise it as we move along, so we stay close to 100% funded, that's our goal.
You know, as a, as a former member of the Piers Fire Department, I can't tell you how much the contributions from the city and the townships are appreciated. I mean, without these contributions, we would, we'd be probably set pretty tough down there as far as our retirement goes, if we were just solely off of, off of our investments. It is greatly appreciated that the council has supported them in the past, and I would like to be able to continue to do that at at least the rate we're doing now, to try and get the department up as to where it kind of reflects the amount of territory that we cover versus some of these other departments do. I know that you're talking evaluation, which is a couple of different things, but, you know, when we look at the Piers Fire Department, the areas that they cover, you know, I mean, we've basically got what, portions in Crow Wing and just about all of eastern Morrison County, which probably 500 square miles of area that we cover. Yeah, one of the largest states. Yeah, so I'd like our retirement to eventually reflect that, you know, so obviously there's a limit to what we can contribute and the townships can't contribute, but I think we need to continue to focus on trying to get you guys up where, you know, where, what everybody feels is comfortable level, I guess. Take a look at what you guys do in the community, all the volunteer time you guys put in, and trust me, all the things you guys do as far as all the grants and things of that nature, you know, taking your time to do this stuff, which you certainly wouldn't be able to, you know, with the fire trucks, with the number of FEMA grants at our apartment, and the food count, and the rescue rig, and all the equipment on that, that was solely raised by the firefighters. I mean, we can't thank you enough for, for all that effort that goes into it, so. I'll open it up for any further questions.
I make the motion that we contribute 11,700. For 26 firemen.
There's a motion on the floor from Donnie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie. Although in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
I abstain. One extension. Jeff?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, continue keeping up the good work that we do.
Sure, we do appreciate it too. And I did, I guess I did mention that, I'm having in here that our current roster is at 27 members right now. As we said, it's always in the past, pay the contributions on 26, so what we consider a full roster.
Yeah, sometimes it floats over, sometimes it floats a little less.
We have a few that, you know, have 20 years or more in service in right now, so we could have some returns going, but not to be, very attached to them.
Two more years.
Let's hold off, I should try to increase that for at least two years.
Maybe just get Mike.
Don't matter.
Just get back.
Didn't do it for the money.
No, none of us did.
Scott, do you have an update on our comp plan? Task force request.
Yes, so I was just gonna give a little quick update on where we're at with comp plan, and. So, right now, we are first city council meeting in February. We're hoping to tonight gather more thoughts, ideas, kind of get us thinking more towards who we want, or who can be a part of this task force for this comp plan. Once again, we're looking for that, around that need people to be, should be a part of it. By the second meeting, this, I just kind of want to give us an agenda so we know what to expect. Second meeting, I'm hoping for us to appoint those members, kind of have an agreement on who we want, and then we'll move forward. And then, early, mid-March, we want to have our first task force meeting, kind of put things together, get some survey, survey information together, to try and hold our kickoff meeting, which will be probably coming up towards the end of March. So that's kind of a rundown of where we're at with, with our comp plan. Some people do have questions about our comp plan, and I would encourage people just to, to come and ask if there are wondering on details of all things, but the main reason I wanted to put this on the agenda is just to publicly inform people that we are putting together a task force, if there's people out there who feel they'd like to be a part of it, or might be an asset to the, to come, come to us as a city so we can move forward on putting stuff together. And Toby's kind of aware of what we're, we're doing and others, so hopefully in the next two weeks, we can, we can gather.
Yeah, don't let me forget, Scott, and I forgot to put it on this agenda, and I apologize, but to officially get Steph on that committee, I don't know if we officially have that when I went through our appointments, and told the crew was on the comprehensive plan committee. I don't have anybody listed on there, so. Next meeting, unless you guys want to add it to the agenda, it's already been set, but I want to make sure that next meeting we get that on the agenda.
Yeah, we can, we can, as appointed, just like we do our designations, we'll do the same process.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, want to make it official.
Okay.
And Steph, if you've got any ideas on, on what type of committee or, or things of that nature we should, we should have, that it'd be kind of nice, when I think of the future of the city, would be to get a good, roundabout, diversified group of people, as far as age, young families, to maybe even some, some late teen kids, to middle-aged folks, you know, people with kids, over to some of our senior citizens, maybe a couple of business people, you know, it'd be nice if we could get a diverse group of people on that, so. Yeah, see where that ends up.
That's all I have for, for an update on that at this time.
Thanks, Scotty.
Our Small Cities Development Program, closeout and reporting.
So I just wanted to give a briefing on this as well, and I want to physically make sure it's in the minutes, so that we can move forward from here on doing what's requested from both Central Minnesota Housing Partnership and Minnesota Deed with XUDT. So, that first letter, you can see, there's two main things on the first letter, is A, we must report annually to deed. So that means whatever revenue we have coming in off of these grants, we have to report.
So that'll never stop?
Correct.
Or reporting will never stop?
Unless our funds.
Somehow, we dry up, because it's a revolving fund program.
So, as, as long as we intend to use the funds for what they're for, this will be an ongoing thing that isn't going to be going away for any time in the near future. And just as a little, the second paragraph, it'd be the third paragraph, now it says each community is responsible for their reporting, so, once again, we talked about this.
I get theirs to you.
Correct. So just so we're all aware, the city of Piers does the reporting for both, or all three Piers, relative and no faults.
Yeah, we were believed, so we.
But they also have an obligation to give us the information.
The reporting on.
I believe of each year.
Correct, yes. October, October.
Was it October?
Yes. Also, so I'm working with, so I spoke with Pat Harbin, who is the head of Minnesota Deed, and who's kind of the head of this program in our region. And if we plan to use these funds, once we can, I mean, things still are kind of working out as far as closing out, but, uh, once this process is complete, we would want to reach out to Central Minnesota Housing Partnership to administer the grants, to keep it clean for audit purpose, and to kind of hire that administration part of outside as a third party for these grant funds. It'll be a very minimal fee, but he advised us to keep, continue using Central Minnesota Housing Partnership like we have in the past. He strongly recommended that. So with that going on, I did reach out to CMHP and requested some applications and things like that, to see if we can start modifying specifically to the city of Piers, so we can start working on ways to use these funds coming up in the future. So that's kind of in process, just so we're all on the same page with that. And the second page is kind of a closeout. We were, you seen this coming weeks back, when heads and needles here, so. That, that is what's going on with Small Cities Development Program. But I would like to put, like I said, just make sure that it's in the minutes that either we are on top of, or we know that we need to review them, so.
Sounds good.
Schedule of Safety Committee inspections.
So it's that time of year where we need to start scheduling, and I believe Donnie, along with the department heads, are a part of the safety committee in regards to inspecting the buildings, so, um, between the department heads and Donnie, I think we can start scheduling. So just as an FYI for Donnie, just wanted to.
Yep. Is Gina had done? Like you done. Next item on our agenda is resolution, ordering for preparation of a report on improvement. And this resolution basically is going to be for SEH to do this feasibility. Hi, Scott.
Here you go. Give some background.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Break up the page, Scott.
Just a quick, if you actually look at resolution, the first resolution that goes into SEH, I meant to put that before this resolution, so if we can actually just go to that page, and Scott's gonna have some handouts too, so we'll just kind of turn it over to Scott first, and then we can go into this.
Yeah, we can, we can. Background. So, as you recall, back in October, I presented the feasibility report, and had for a potential 2016 street project, and it had a whole bunch of different streets, kind of à la carte, different areas of the city. And then, you know, that was taken back then to the Public Works Committee, and you guys have met a few times, talking about different things, and you've got with the county, and this, and that, we've talked to the county at least. And so, uh, based on the last Public Works Committee meeting, recommendation came out to move forward with Edward and Third Street, so Edward Street, Third Avenue, Southeast Project, if you will. And so, as far as next steps, the city's typically done special assessments on, on projects, so it's yet to follow the state's statutes, Chapter 429 process. And so, part of that process is to prepare a feasibility report, and then the next part of the process is to have a public hearing. There's one of two public hearings that are required by the process, and this one's called the improvement hearing, and so you bring everyone in, and basically present the report. I would just present the Edward, third part of the report, and basically get feedback from the public on whether or not they agree with move forward with the project, or any input that they want to give you. So I go through that, I talk about where the project is, what it is, how much it costs, preliminary assessment numbers, things like that, methodology for assessments. And then, if you wanted to still move forward after that, the next step would be to order the improvement, which is passing a resolution, which basically says, for me, prepared plans and specs. I would prepare the plans and specs, which are basically bidding documents, and I'd bring those back to you, you'd approve them. Again, assuming you want to keep moving forward. You'd approve them, and then authorize advertisement for bids, this is a high enough dollar amount where we need to go for public bids. So you advertise for bids, bring those back, and then you can decide whether or not you want to move forward with the project and actually build it or not. Some cities, a caveat, some cities, before you move forward with the project into construction, will actually have the second public hearing, which is the final assessment hearing. That's where the assessments are nailed down. These are what they are, and you'll have that hearing and approve the assessments, basically, before you start construction. There's a little bit of risk in that, in case there's any.
Yeah.
I prefer the other way, so. The typical way then is you build the project during the summer, towards the fall, assuming it's a single-year project, like this one would be, then you know what your project costs are, recalculate the assessments, have your public hearing all in time to get the assessments certified to the county by the, before the tax rolls, and probably taxes are ready for next year, so. That's kind of the laydown of everything, so backing it up again, so when we did this feasibility report, I didn't have you approve, like, a resolution ordering me to prepare this, but to follow all the steps, now that you want to move forward with something, we almost kind of got to go back and approve that, however, so since then, I'll hand these out. One of the items on the agenda there is an addendum to that report. And so after, after we presented this report, so when I presented this, we had done this cooperating with Rich, Prairie, Sioux, and Lauder District, kind of backing it up way up to like 2010, only had done some capital improvement planning with the city, and with RIPS, concurrently, we're looking at overlapping street improvements with any kind of potential utility improvements by, by RIPS, which only makes sense if you're digging the road up, that's usually a big part of the expense of replacing utilities, which are old roads. At that time, we were looking at, or we had costs in there anyway, for replacing water main underneath Edward Street, and possibly adding some water mains as well on Third, and there wasn't any sewer improvements identified, other than possibly a couple services on one of the legs of Third. But anyway, since then, another thing that came out of committee, I think, the Public Works Committee was, sorry. So with that feasibility report, we had assumed kind of worst-case scenario of doing a more of a traditional street reconstruction, so we're replacing the curb and gutter, replacing the street, everything. Since then, looking at the costs and everything, the community said, well, looking at, what if we save the curb, because the curb's in pretty good shape on a lot of that stretch, and then just basically do like a resurfacing project, full-depth reclamation is what I talked about, pulverized pavement, grinded up with a baseball, peel off a little bit, pave it. But we're still looking at storm sewer on Third and adding curb there, there's no curb.
So you're not doing water main?
So, yeah, it's a long-winded thing here, but, so this addendum basically pulls out the water main, and then it pulls out during, during the majority, on Edward Street, we're not doing curb and gutter replacement, other than at the intersection with Third. So those costs, one way, basically is what, what this is. And so, if that makes sense.
Okay, so the estimate I'm looking at here, Scott, that the 11-4, 2015? Just so I'm, just to make sure we got this here, 11-4, 2015, that's actually, both numbers do reflect this, by the way it looks.
Yep, that's the, the estimate that was included in the packet, it's the same thing that's attached, so I just gave you.
Okay.
Yep. So, so this, this project now, which, like you said, the detailed estimate is in the back of my addendum handout here, and it's summarized in the, in the letter, this letter, addendum. The, the total project cost now is, is 255,764, is what my estimate is, of all of that saved up. If we assume half of that would be assessed, like a 50% assessment, 127,000 maybe, two would be assessed, and the rest would be city costs, general city costs. And if you back that into how much on a per-front foot basis, we'd be looking at about $51.65 a front foot, so if you had a five, a 100-foot wide lot, it'd be $5,165 in this scenario. We haven't talked a whole lot about that, of what, what the goals are for.
We've never assessed 50%.
Oh, I wouldn't say that, but we haven't lately.
That's on your policy, but every project is unique.
Yeah.
Has its own, and you need them to offer a credit.
Yeah, what we tried doing in the last couple of projects is, is to actually put more city money up front to try and keep those assessments somewhat reasonable, because they tend to get way out of hand in some cases, so, like Mike was saying, you know, when you talk, start talking 50% of the project cost, you know. Assess. You're talking a lot of money for something you're trying to have to come up with, so. Tried bringing those down. It's worked pretty good, but obviously, compensation, only upfront to projects too, so.
So, yeah, you just part of the discussion tonight, I don't know if you had anything applying other than this that I could talk about, assuming you have a public hearing to talk about, or are you going to jump in at that part of the public hearing?
Yeah, I think for now.
The law is still open.
Yeah, we're basically talking about those, improving your cost estimate.
Yep.
And I guess, well, after that point, we probably need to schedule a public hearing.
Right, right, so, yeah, so I guess just going through this formally, then, you know, the project's still necessary, cost-effective, feasible, from an engineer standpoint, address the deteriorated streets out there, correct some drainage issues that are, that are out there, and then these are the updated project costs, in detail in the back here, so, so if you want to move forward in the public hearing, there's two different resolutions that you want to pass. One is to order preparation of these reports, and then the next one would be to accept the report and, and set up a public hearing, so.
Gina, do you have these comprehensive resolutions? 20%, I don't remember, it's like this. And I don't have that with me either. For now, let's, uh, let's try and get these resolutions taken care of. The first one is ordering preparation, cave of the report, and that's basically what we're looking at now, with Scott. That is Resolution 0208-2016-1. Gina, can you read that resolution, please?
Whereas it is proposed to improve Edward Street between Park Avenue and Fort Avenue South, and Third Street South between Cast, Capture Street and Oak Street by reconstruction to distriche the utilities, and to assess the benefited property for all or a portion of the cost of the improvement pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 429. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of Piers, Minnesota, that the proposed improvement called the 2016 Street and Utility Improvements be referred to the City Engineer SEH Incorporated for study, and that the person is instructed to report to the council with all convenience speed, advising the council in a preliminary way as to whether the proposed improvement is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible, whether it should be best made as proposed or in connection with some other improvement, the estimated cost of the improvement as recommended, and a description of the methodology used to calculate individual assessments for affected parcels, adopted by the council this eighth day of Friday, February 2016.
Very good, Gina. You heard the reading of the resolutions, can we get a motion to approve it?
How much is the motion?
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike, although in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carry unanimously. Let's go to the second resolution. Excuse me. This is receiving the feasibility report and calling for hearing on the improvement, which is Resolution 0208-2016-2. Gina?
Whereas pursuant to resolution of the council adopted, adopted February 8th, 2016, a report has been prepared by the City and Engineer SEH Incorporated, with reference to proposed 2016 and utility improved, street and utility improvements, the improvement of Edward Street between Park Avenue and Fort Street South, and Third Avenue South between Capstone Street and Oak Street, by reconstruction of the states and utilities, and this report and addendum to the report were received by the council on February 8th, 2016, and whereas the report and addendum provide information regarding whether the proposed improvement is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible, whether it should be made as proposed or in connection with some other improvement, the estimated cost of the improvement as recommended, and a description of the methodology used to calculate individual assessments for affected parcels. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of Piers, Minnesota. Number one, the council will consider the improvement of such a street in accordance with the report. Number one, the council will consider the improvement of such a street in accordance with the report and assessment of abutting property for all, for all or a portion of the cost of the improvement pursuant to Minnesota statutes, chapter four twenty-nine, and an estimated total cost of the improvement of two hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars. Two, the public hearing shall be held on such proposed improvement on the.
Well, we, yeah, we're gonna have to, we have to, we're gonna have to set that, we have to just.
In the council chambers of the city hall at set time. And the clerk shall be, shall give mailed and published notice of such hearing and improvement as required by law. Adopted by the council this eighth day of February, two thousand sixteen.
Good, Gina. Heard the reading of the feasibility report, calling for a hearing on improvement. Get a motion to have that approved.
With that motion, should we be setting the date together?
Let's just, uh, we can do that before we accept the resolution. Either the twenty-second of February or the fourteenth of March. I want to make sure, make sure that these, everybody gets notified and that registered letters go out to all those folks.
So, yeah, so with that, I mean, there's, it's a strict process.
We have to, we have to give a certain amount of time too, and I think it's thirty or sixty days.
Well, it's, it's, it's ten days is what you need.
Oh, that's all we need.
You gotta publish it twice in the legal newspaper. And then seven days apart, and then three days has to elapse between the last publication and the date of the hearing. So the earliest we could have it would be the twenty-fifth of this month. In the past, we've had them before a council meeting, like say at six, I don't know what your desire is, I mean, we can do it on the fourteenth. That'd be plenty of time, unless you want to do it on a separate night.
Well, it'd be kind of nice to allow plenty of time for this to make sure people get the information and that we're prepared for the meeting as well, so.
We pushed it back to the fourteenth, Scott, do you feel we're ample time for getting good bids and, you know, for the rest of that process down the road, you know? Well, no, but I mean, we need to look.
Well, are we gonna have enough time for that?
Yeah.
Because it's already spring.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, normally, typically when we do bids, I mean, the earlier you can give them the, you know.
Yeah, bidding's bidding, but the one school of thought is, yeah, you bid it early winter, it's a good, uh, tradition. Better than later. I mean, with this, irregardless, we're probably looking at bidding this thing maybe, you know.
Right.
So we start construction, I'm guessing if, if you did go forward after the fourth of July, it would be done before school starts, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Just to give everybody kind of a timeline, that's kind of what I wanted to hear.
I mean, the good thing is, is you did the report already, so that saves a lot of time.
Right.
So what are we looking at for a date?
Let's get it done. Twenty-eighth, I am not available, so prefer, for my, for my, I could have someone else come, but I prefer fourteen.
Let's do the fourteenth of.
Talking the fourteenth of. March.
March.
So let's do six of those, possibly a few for that.
I would make that motion for that resolution, zero-two-zero-eight, two thousand sixteen dash two. That the, uh, meeting would be held on the fourteenth of March, two thousand sixteen, in the council chambers at six P M.
Motion on the floor, but Mike, can we get a second? Also, a second by Donnie, all those in favor, please, seconded by, by stating aye.
Aye.
So with that, I work with Scott, hearing that, I'll get those.
Yes, yes, okay.
As you recall, we had done maps like this and, and then, like preliminary rolls like this, so.
You give it through, it's only feet, right, or so far, or how does that affect the public?
Uh, for this kind of a public hearing, it's, you're just inviting those that you intend to assess.
Just the ones you intend to assess, not beyond the scope.
Not the three fifty radius, that's like a variance or something.
No, no, no.
Perfect. Yep. So we can go through that, there's a specific notice and that, what we've done in the past is I'll get you and what's, and then assemble all of it.
And work with the paper.
So we gotta get a, a similar notice in the paper and all that, so I always work with you.
Okay. Excellent, so we got anything else, Scott?
Not, uh, not really, I guess one other thing, just to step back on just the whole scope of this, this method, if you will. So we're saving curb, and we've done some survey already out there, there are spots where the curb's pretty bad. So I mean, there's some increased risk that we're not gonna solve every drainage problem out there, but we've looked at it after heavy rains and things like that. So definitely won't make it any worse and it should get quite a bit better, but it's.
And there is a couple of spots on the north end of that project, I think where Bob and I looked, where there is gonna be twenty feet of curb we gotta replace.
We'll certainly, we'll plan for that.
Yeah, you know.
We'll just have an item or we'll, we'll pick some of those. And it's kind of like remodeling, you know, kind of like on the safety roll stage.
Yeah, there'll be a couple change orders.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, we have something called Regional Safety Group Information, what do you got with that?
So I put the agenda in form, the council, um, it's in your packets, it's very lengthy. But what I'll do is I'll just go through and I'll touch on a few points that, well, explaining it to detail for what we need to look at. So, as you're aware, every year, being compliant, we watch a certain number of training videos and things like that. And take certain steps throughout the year to be compliant. What the Regional Safety Group is, is NJPA partnered with League of Minnesota Cities in regards to, along with cities in the region. Um, so like, we would be pretty much paired up with Royal Palmetto Falls, Uppsala, you know, Warrenmark County. County area for a safety group, and what we would do is team up with them and do training. Um, I'm not, it's, it's still very vague, and this is just a sample resolution, just so we kind of get an idea of what it's about. I need, um, more details on it, um, as it's not, we don't have to do anything yet until the end of this month. If we do decide to move forward with it, what other cities are jumping on with this group? Uh, but what it is, is I kind of explained to Toby a little bit, um, earlier on this, because some questions were brought up about our safety training videos and stuff like that. I want to say in two thousand twelve, maybe two thousand eleven, there was a bunch of videos purchased on behalf of the city. They're very, very expensive videos, and they go out of date quick. With this, they give me the sort of cities, if you read in there, they cover a portion of it. And then I, I don't want to say it for sure yet, but I'm thinking, uh, NJPA will be covering another portion, so it'll be, if not, it'd be very cost-effective to the city to do this. Um, we'll be up to date with everything on an annual basis. We will receive all the adequate training that we will need. Um, it'll be time efficient, things like that, so. We don't have to necessarily take the steps to do that, we still have the videos, we can train in-house, um, we can opt out of it. But it's just something for us to further advance training, um, so, and maybe it would be easier.
Can we, uh, on the end of this and utilize the tapes we have already, can the whole group, I mean, possibly utilize them?
That would probably be more up to.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that there, I mean, whatever training we go and attempt to with them is gonna be a lot more up to date in a way as well. Because we're, we're just not saying that we're out of date or anything, but I'm sure they have more advanced things.
That's the changes yearly.
Yeah, when you look at our mandatory things, you know, our employee right-to-know, blood and airborne path, the June's confined spaces, things of that nature. I know that stuff changes frequently, and I do know that those videos are extremely expensive. I want to say the last thing down is like, is that a couple of years, something like that?
Well, it was, I think that was, we got for sure eight grand stuck in those videos.
It was a grand.
What's that?
It was a grand.
A thousand?
It was a grand.
It was a grand, yes, it's a yes.
But I'm just, to give you an idea of what, I mean, we're looking at updating some of them this past year, it's just, it's a ridiculous amount.
Well, I think you should keep researching, I think this is probably a good cost-effective way for the city to get on board with some of this stuff, but.
And just to kind of brief, two of the other cities have kind of been doing the same, they're pretty technical, so see if you can get some ideas and thoughts on it. If this something to move forward with, that I can prepare an actual resolution, that's the same thing I did for tonight. But, you know, not everybody can make it to the trains, you know, we're short-staffed, so to say, and, you know, have. So we still have our videos, we still have our procedures, they're still up to code for what we need, but this will be another addition, so.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a, if it's kind of a train-to-trainer type deal, where, you know, you get the information to train down to our staff. I'm not sure how it's gonna be set up or, or whatever, but, you know, if it's something you want to partake in, I think it can be a good deal.
Yeah, and I did, you know, I don't want to speak a term for Bob, but Bob, unfortunately, has to watch the most videos, I think, um, because they alternate him. But maybe this is something to be a little bit more exciting for him. But, um, it all comes down to timing and things like that, so, like I said, we still have the videos here, we can still train in-house. Maybe this is something I could attend and bring back and do. Um, there's a lot of details in this. It talks about termination ninety days prior, a number of training meeting sessions, there's one that's gonna be held every month. League of Minnesota Cities will be covering, I want to say, the, the, the total sessions. So there's just a lot of good details about it, I don't know for sure what the member cost could be, like I said, there's other forms of, like, with NJPA covering some of the costs on that. But I think it'll be.
Yes, if you could get a little more information, Scott, for, for the next meeting, so we know and, and understand, you know, exactly this is about and how we've been, how we've been used to this, I don't think exactly, things of that nature, I think it's, uh, just listening to it upfront, it sounds like a good deal.
That's what I'll do, I did not have a good amount of time to dig into this yet too far, but I just wanted to let you know before it was something that did want us to do, so.
Excellent, thanks, Scott. Uh, we have some department reports, Bobby O, do you have anything? Gene?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My monthly report is in front of you again. Nothing truly exciting, except for the numbers of the one twenty-two, or the height that had, in my five years here, so it's very busy January. I think we all heard that George Weber brought forth that our contract with the school district, and it was passed, so it's a good thing for us, for reference to the extra, money he's gonna supply to us.
We're probably gonna have to take and prove that contract as well.
We did, we did, before they did.
Okay. I went through their board, so I think I want to thank George Weber for that. If you see on the bills, I don't know if they're on this month, but you see a bill for one thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents for foremost promotions. It's money that I get through PAC, because I sit on that, that committee and that board to educate the youth, reference the drug, healthy living. I gave you what we give the youth, and I go around to the schools for presentations. So it's money that's not coming out of my budget or the city's budget, it's coming from money that's, comes from the federal and state level reference of funds. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, that it's not costing us money. Other than that, any questions?
I'll have to, um, Eric, do you want to hook up with Mike, or Mike can hook up with me or Scott or whatever? And we'll plan a couple of commission meetings, and so we have something to bring to the council shortly here on our rental ordinance stuff.
Sure. I'll just wait for you to get ahold of yours, for you and me, until you come in and.
Yeah, whatever you figure out, or how it works, so.
Awesome.
Okay, thanks. Scotty, have you got anything to go with?
I have a couple things, um, so just as we spoke prior to this, and it puts me in a tough position. Um, but we had a request for someone, they want to rent, um, next door. For one of their, um, I want to say it's close to the end of February for a birthday party, it'd be four hours, they want to rent the senior center. It is in our fee schedule, it's ninety-five dollars for the day. Um, but would we have an issue prorating that to, um, whatever, forty-seven, fifty, whatever that would be? And renting that out to someone in the public?
I think we've already had it in our fee schedule, don't we?
Well, I think that's, you know, it.
No, technically, I don't think you can do that.
Well, it's in the, but it's more like targeting, you know, targeting groups.
Compared to an individual.
Yes, and kind of like nonprofits, fifty-five alive, seniors, I mean, things like.
They paid the money and they followed the rules and they cleaned it up like they're supposed to after.
Yeah, I don't think this individual will have an issue. So versus their, are we okay with that?
I was gonna say, I thought there was part of it, maybe they changed it, but I know at one point it was like they're gonna change the deposit that they're listed or whatever, that you don't get back if you don't take care of it, besides the, I don't remember if they changed it or not, so.
Thing is, there's a lot of people that use next door that we didn't even know about, and this one's actually coming forward and is gonna pay, so I don't know.
I guess I think it's okay.
Um, so would it be okay if I prorated for four hours versus a full day?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, um, as we are aware that we meet in city hall for various reasons, um.
Did that change that one too then?
Yes, it changes outside doors, so with that being said, we have, um, I want to say there's a card playing group every Sunday.
Yes, there is.
And that has never been brought up, and I don't want to be the bad person, so I want to let the council address that, how we want to handle that.
Well, don't they, who has a key from the seniors in the senior center, and how many keys are down there?
So there was numerous keys out, now I have it down to three, and they're all assigned, so everybody that got a key, whether it be Eric and I, or Bob, to you, um, the council, everyone has your number on your key, and you are checked out to that key. That's the same with the three ladies next door.
Okay, so there's three girls next door who have keys, can we just have them contact one of these?
I can, I can run across it, open the door, would it?
Yeah, so I guess it's just, are we okay with the card group, I mean, they can come and check out a key. So we just kind of have a, Karen and I just kind of have a, I don't know, they can come and check out a key and they're responsible for that key.
Are these keys that we all got handed, are they, can somebody go up top and duplicate them?
No. Do not duplicates.
Okay.
We gotta keep in mind though, too, what's sitting downstairs, Mayor.
I know, that's why.
There's a huge liability on the, especially on my shoulders, what sits downstairs, that I'm accounted for when I enter my door down there. And I don't know who has access to this building, and to me, it could be a very grave concern.
Yeah.
And that's just me, because I have to answer to this.
That's why, well, that's one of the reasons we did this rekey thing.
Because I have to answer to the state on this one, so that's, to me, it's.
And just even, I had a note from our cleaning lady, said that the back door was left open. I mean, I, you know, accidents happen and then, you know, but.
And it just happened this weekend, right, Scott?
It was the thirtieth. But with what's going on here lately and what's been going on this week, we can't have.
No, that can't happen.
We can't have the doors just filled up. But, I guess anybody who's in the councils handles what they want to do.
Well, and I don't have an issue with this, guys playing cards on Sunday, they just need to get a, either sign a key out. Or staff comes over, or one of us, or one of the three.
Yeah, our staff are involved, but that's not always home, man.
Yeah.
Okay, but then back to Eric's thing, he's responsible for what happens here, so somebody comes, they let them in, whether they get a key from us or whatever. Nobody's sitting here during the day, when they're here during the day, there's city employees here. At night on Sundays, there's nobody here. Does somebody have to be staffed here then when somebody's here that shouldn't be? I don't know, you know?
Yeah, it raises a whole, a whole bunch of, of different scenarios that, none of which are real good. I think we, number one, we need to limit the keys that are out, which we, we've done, I think we recognize that as being a problem. I also think that we don't increase the number that we have out, no, I just don't see a need for it. But if, if it's, if it's a card group or somebody wants to come in and use the senior center or whatever, by all means, come in and use it. But I think they should figure out a way to get a key from. But I think they should figure out a way to get a key from people in the senior center. They basically take care of that area, and they're kind of assigned to that area, so, um, I think they need to keep track of their keys that are out.
Well, they shouldn't be lending, but they shouldn't be lending their keys to somebody else. Somebody's gotta be responsible that has a key to let whoever in, make sure you lock up.
Yeah, I realize that in a perfect room, but how you gonna pull that off?
Well, I just don't want it to happen, is all, it's, well, you know, they're gonna be coming later, I'll leave the door unlocked until they get here.
Do you leave your house key with everybody?
Then it's unlocked for two hours, or an hour, or even a half an hour, and all it takes is someone that's not... Whatever, just to lock in, and, I mean, whatever, I, I don't know, that's...
It's a tough situation, because this has been a community building, and it does house a lot of things that maybe shouldn't be accessible, you know? I see this as something for our task force, and looking at what we're gonna do in the future here with, with buildings, or city hall, or, you know, the staffing, or whatever you wanna, not a community center, but, you know, whatever, we do have a lot of issues to take care. And it's not gonna get solved all overnight.
Well, I, I do definitely see the need for, for some areas to be very secure. I guess I have some ideas that, that maybe wouldn't be very expensive, but, um, that would help our security issue, especially for, on Eric's end, things. Some of the documents that we have archived, um, things of that nature, which I, I agree we need to probably figure out a better way to keep that secure, but if we wanna leave this building accessible for the seniors and the, and the card groups and people like that, um, then that's what's gonna have to be done, if we, I mean... I don't wanna run into a situation where we're gonna shut the communities and they're done, because all of a sudden, now we have security concerns after the last hundred years, you know? I think we need to try and do everything we possibly can to increase our security or whatever, but I don't wanna have to limit access for the people who are gonna use this building.
And I don't think that, I mean, in reality, the card players are certainly least of anybody's worries.
Right.
It's just, yeah, I don't wanna go into council, I don't wanna get a decision from the council or what. So, should I have someone from, like, the card playing, playing group, should I have them check out a key? Or will it be, like, what?
Isn't that, is that one of the three that has, I think the card playing group is one of those, is one of those ladies that has a key, I think.
As far as I understand, it's one's almost on every time.
Well, I would, I would ask that the card group get together with somebody from the senior center, and have him work that out.
So then it's off, or, okay.
Good. Who else we got, Scotty?
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, treasures report, and, uh...
Checkbook balance on January thirty-first, balanced with the statement at one million, one hundred and eighty-four dollars, three hundred and fifty-five, and zero cent, or seven cents. By the way, the recommendations on what we wanna put away in a CD or a new market.
Okay, we did have that ready, right?
I do not have it ready.
Can we get a motion to approve the treasures report?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor, for all the staff, we'll get a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please, seconded by, that stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Claims for the month.
I make a motion to approve the claims for the month for a total of eighty-eight dollars, ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents. I got the stated one.
Okay, well, today I had one. Okay. There is a motion on the floor by Mike to approve the... Your second, I'll second that. Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please, seconded by, that stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Scotty?
Just one last clarification, uh, so for those assessment order, or public hearing notices, we typically send our estimate of what people's assessments might be. That's totally preliminary. Any thoughts on that? Should I go up to fifty and just explain it at the meeting? But it's still, we don't have to.
That'll get to me later. Or I could put a hundred percent down there, I know it's not, it'll probably all...
Or I could put it down.
We'll get the whole column.
We don't have to include anything, we can just say...
I'd just assume not, and we'll have to take a little bull through with everything, and probably get the council's feedback on how they wanna try and...
See before the hearing.
Yeah. Yep, have a plan to give it. Thanks, Scott.
'Cause the last project back here was what, fifteen, eighteen, twenty, or somewhere in there, yeah.
I don't know, I hate that, though.
Well...
Can I?
Sure.
I'll be free, for you, man.
Thank you, nation. A hundred percent deductible on your taxes.
Don't worry, they're gonna come back around one of these years again, back at me. I ain't done yet.
I'll make the motion to approve it. Motion made by Donnie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please, seconded by, that stating aye.
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 Thank you all very much.
It was a Saturday afternoon.